Good evening all, and welcome to our first meeting in January of the year 2020. And a happy new year to you all. I hope it's been a good year for you. Thank you for being present this evening. I'm going to ask the clerk at this time to call the roll.
Mayor Marshburn?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gibson.
The next item of business, we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Phil Matthews, who also will introduce the person to offer our invocation this evening. Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
Let's stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
Mr. Mayor, I'm honored to have the pastor of my church, the Amplify Church, who is on Highway 70, right across from IHOP with the big tall steeple. And we used to be the First Church of Nazarene, and Pastor Philip Muddlin, I asked him would he come and do our invocation or not. He gracefully said he would love to. Pastor Muddlin, the microphone is all yours, sir. And thank you again for coming.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Let us pray. Lord, tonight we ask your blessing upon this first council meeting of 2020. We come tonight with gratitude for all that you have done to bless our town of Garner. 2019 was an amazing year. 2020 looks to be one for the record books. As we watch housing go up in record numbers, as small businesses move in and thrive, and as the economy gets stronger yet again, help us, Lord, to be ever so thankful. We pray for wisdom and for direction over those who guide our town. For our elected mayor and for this council, may they have hearts full of love for those that may disagree with them. May they have ears that listen when they want to only speak. And may they exhibit a character that does what is best for those that they serve first. We are but a small part of this wonderful country. The freedoms that we enjoy are carried on the backs of those men and women who serve in our fearless armed forces. Be with all far and wide tonight who are faithful and are from their family and friends, and protect our nation and our liberties. Lord, we humbly ask for guidance and wisdom from Ojai. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
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 Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, the next item of business is petitions and comments. It's a portion of the meeting to receive comments from the public on items not included in this agenda. Citizens should sign up, town clerk, to speak prior to the start of the meeting. The board is interested in hearing your concerns, but may not take action or deliberate on subject matter brought up during the petitions comments section, segment, excuse me. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or town staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. And I do have Mr. Pierce, who has signed up this evening, so don't have anyone else signed up. Is that true, Madam Clerk? Thank you. So, Mr. Pierce, if you'll come forward, please, sir. We'll be here from you at this time. We will ask you to keep your comments to about three minutes, if possible.
My name is Ricky Pierce. I live at 1810 Van Doren Springs Road here in Garner. My roots in Garner predate the 20th century. My father's grandfather, Jim Creech, was a farmer and businessman, and it's his namesake, Creech Trove. As a kid, I remember times hanging around the adult men in someone's backyard, listening into them talk. Eventually, some subject would come up, and one of them would say, "Well, when you run the old hound dog up on the porch, and he has nowhere else to go, he's getting ready to bite you." This board's recent decision to cancel the Christmas parade for the reason given has run this old hound dog up on the porch. I have decided that it's time to start paying more attention to what is going on in my town and who is responsible for being the man in charge of making the decisions. Each of you was elected to your position by the citizens of this town, and you answer to us. The NAACP and other social media groups like the Move Silent Sound group do not tell us who is allowed in our parades and how we are going to live our lives. If they want to express their viewpoint, they can come here before this board and make their opinions known in three-minute increments, just as I am doing now. I certainly hope each of you have learned from your hasty, ill-thought-out decision. Not only did you deprive the children of Garner and our surrounding community the opportunity to enjoy their Christmas parade as they had in the past, you deprived a group that attempts to educate an opportunity to march. I invite each of you to come out to the local meeting of the Sons of the Confederate Veterans and see what their purpose is. You might just learn something. Since the parade's cancellation, I've had the opportunity to talk with quite a few people in our town: local businessmen, former elected officials, current and retired police officers, and everyday people just like me. They thank me for my words and encourage me to keep it up. I intend to do just that. Get used to seeing me at these local meetings and expect me to speak when I see the need to. Garner is my hometown. There's no place I would rather be. I love my hometown, and I will not sit around and watch this elected board with its liberal ideologies turn my hometown into another chapel hill. Now, with that said, I couldn't say all I wanted to because of the three-minute time, so I'm going to send each of you by email a copy of what I wanted to say. I'm going to start being here, and I'm going to pay more attention to what's going on. And I'm going to speak when I need to, as I've been encouraged to by so many everyday people like me that just don't have what it takes to get up here and speak. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate you adhering to our time limit as well, Mr. Pierce. Okay, I think the next item of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion or changes? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. And it is so ordered. Okay, the next item on our agenda is presentations. Tonight, I am pleased to present a somewhat different format for the town's annual report, sometimes known as the State of the Town. With the assistance of our communication manager, Mr. Rick Mercer, a video has been prepared which captures some of the many events and activities of the past year. In addition to the information presented, I would draw your attention to our annual popular annual financial report. I have a copy here in my hand. You can find copies out there on the desk, I believe. It provides much information on the town's fiscal status. As your new mayor, I'm excited about the current status of our town and look forward to serving with this council as we continue to lead and to try to ensure that Garner remains a great place to be. I might also note that we're thankful for the hard work of town staff and engaged residents who helped make our successes possible this year. In addition to what you see in just a few moments in this fast-paced video, there were a number of accolades the town earned in 2019, including a Triangle Business Journal Space Award for the Amazon Redevelopment Project, the National Award White Deer Park won for its educational work involving pollinators, the six statewide awards staff won for communications work, and the National Awards the Finance Department won again for the town's budget document and financial reports. These all speak well of the activity and work of our dedicated town staff. And now, Mr. Mercer, if you will, let's play the video and introduce it as you would.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. It was another great year with many successes that we celebrated here in Garner, even as we grow really fast, as I think was alluded to in the invocation. We know we're growing fast. We're a dynamic town. I want to give a special commendation to Adam Carroll in our Communications Department, who helped put this together. Did a fantastic job. So, let's look at it. And, yeah, thank you, John.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Service to Garner was the culmination of a career that I could never have anticipated, but thank goodness it happened.
I want the new members and the older members to realize what you provide for the citizens of Garner is a service. Service is what keeps us going. Service is what brought us here. And service is what is going to keep us here. God bless you. Thank you.
This is so much more than just a plant, so much more than just tax-based. It's an opportunity to give people a chance to improve their quality of life through employment.
Any lavender?
I know. Have a good one.
You, too.
of this day, and allow our golden moments to roll on just a little while longer. And we pause just now to say thank you.
It is a Merry Christmas present to me and to the town of Garner. I am so excited to see it happen, and it's been 40 years in coming.
One of my favorite philosophers and poets is Ralph Waldo Emerson, who said, and I quote, "What lies behind us and what lies before us are tiny manners compared to what lies
Work in our communications efforts, there are. You know, we can't do it without y'all, without the resources. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, under Presentations, we will have the report from Malden's and Jenkins, the audit presentation. So, let me see. Where are you folks? David?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Councilmembers, good evening as well. I just wanted to make a few brief comments and then also introduce the auditors here with us tonight to make the presentation. Just wanted to really commend the staff in the Finance Office. We've had quite a bit of transition and turnover in the office, and we had folks come in and really step up to the plate, get up to speed very quickly on things. And some of the folks that had been there a little longer stepped up to the plate as well and took on additional responsibilities to keep the office functioning properly day to day and made it possible that we were able to have a clean audit report for 1819. And I especially like to recognize Ms. Jenny Shaker, who is here this evening. She's our Accounting Services Manager. She came in at a real critical time in the audit process and was really instrumental in pulling things together and helping get the financial report prepared for this past fiscal year. So, I'd like to recognize her efforts. Excuse me. This evening, we have Mr. James Bence here from Malden Jenkins. They are the town's audit firm. This was the second year that they performed the audit work for the town. They were a good team to work with. We enjoyed the experience working with them. They were very thorough in their work, and I feel like that the collaboration between the auditors and finance staff has put together a good, solid report that will be presented to you tonight. And he'll come forward and make his presentation. We'll be glad to answer any questions you have afterwards.
Thank you, David.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is James Bence. I'm the Audit Service Partner for your audit engagement. I believe before you have our auditor's discussion and analysis, which is the primary document I'll go through, that's our document. I also have a copy of your CAFR, which is what you all prepare and we audit. And if at any point in time you have any questions, do feel free to jump in. And then, if we have any at the end as well, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you have. I don't intend to read the entire document, but I am going to kind of flip through and hit some of the highlights. Again, if you have any questions, feel free to jump in. Just on page one, kind of as a summary, we always want to make sure to stress and emphasize the financial statements that we audit are prepared by the town and the town's management. So, David and his team put together the information, and as the independent external auditor, we audit that information to give an opinion as to whether or not it's materially correct as presented. So, the information that we've opined on is prepared by your management team. And again, we're independent from that process. Our firm, for those not familiar with us, I know there's a lot of new faces up here on page two. We're a regional firm. We have offices in several different states, and we serve local governments, about 450 local governments throughout the entire southeast. So, we have a footprint that goes from Florida to the northeast corner of North Carolina, all the way out to Virginia and down to Mississippi. So, we have, myself included, 50 or so people in the firm who spend 100% of their time year-round working with local governments. So, it is something that we're highly invested in, and we spend all of our time working with. And so, it represents about 30% of what our firm does in attest services for local governments. On page four, as part of this year's audit, again, our responsibility under the auditing standards is to audit your financial statements in accordance with the generally accepted accounting or auditing principles, as well as government auditing standards. And through that process, we don't test 100% of your transactions. That would be extremely costly and not something you're looking for. What we do is we issued an opinion that says the financial statements are materially correct as presented. And our opinion this year was an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, and states that your financial statements, as prepared by management, are materially correct. With that, I'm going to go to page six and jump between there and page seven. Generally, when people want to know how did they do for the year, the two things they kind of look for, did we have any findings, which we'll get to later in the document, and then how does my general fund look? Because obviously, when you look local government to local government, the general fund is the one consistent fund that all local governments have. And so, at the bottom of page six, you can see we've got kind of a four-year trend for your general fund and how the revenues compare to expenditures for the year. And as you like to see, there's a little bit of up and down. So, you may have expenditures lower than revenues one year, and then in the following year, you'll have expenditures higher than revenues, because maybe you're using those funds for capital projects, and those are not annuity-type expenditures. And so, you want to see that a little bit movement on the expenditure side. At the bottom of page seven, the kind of key points I want to show here are, we've got a table at the bottom that shows the last four years of where your fund balance for your general fund looks compared to your annual expenditures of the general fund. And that's kind of the one consistent measure that local governments can do when they look one to another. While you may not have the same services, what you have in your fund balance compared to your annual expenditures should be a consistent ratio. GFOA, who's the National Government Finance Officers Association, that's who you submit your CAFR to for the award program that you receive, they generally recommend for a June 30 year end that you have about 24 to 36% of your fund balance compared to expenditures. And you can see, you guys, at the end of 2019, the unassigned fund balance number is about 52%. So, you're well above where GFOA recommends a government be for a healthy general fund operation. So, your last four years, you've kind of bounced around in the 50% range for that unassigned fund balance. So, when you're trying to figure out how does my general fund look compared to what the expectation would be, you're above the benchmark. On, let's go to page 10. Along with our report on the financial statements, we also prepared two compliance reports. Anytime there's a government audit, there's a Yellow Book Report, which addresses internal controls of the local government. And then, if you have federal expenditures of $750,000 or state expenditures of $500,000, you're required to have a compliance audit. The town had over $500,000 of state expenditures this year, and so you received an unmodified opinion on your compliance report for the state single audit program, which we looked at your Powell Bill funds for that program. On page 12, David mentioned this a minute ago, but, you know, we come out in the summer, and we do our interim work, and then we come back in the fall, and we do the field work for the audit. When we came out for the interim work was the last week of your former finance director's employment, which from an audit perspective generally gives us a little uneasy situation when we're walking into a position where the town's not going to have a known finance director. David and his team came in, and I want to give them a pat on the back. They did a great job to what we were a little nervous about would be a second year engagement. With the big turnover that your finance department had, they were able to get everything, all their information together, get the books in line for us to come out on the same scheduled time and get the audit complete, as well as we were able to issue the report this year with no material weaknesses in the findings. And so, I want to take a minute and just thank them, thank council, and your decisions on who to replace and how to staff your finance department. You've done a good job this year. On page 13, again, through the audit process, we did have a few audit adjustments. Those were provided to management. They've been incorporated into the financial statements, and they're included in both your financial statements, as you have, as well as your accounting And then, on page 15, the last item, I'll just kind of touch on real briefly. Starting on page 15, we've got several pages of the new upcoming accounting standards, which will, some of them will be applicable to the town in the future coming years, and some of them may not currently be applicable, but could change based on decisions you all make as a governing body. We try to work with management proactively so that they're aware of the standards that are applicable, but we always want to make sure that you all have that information available to you, because obviously, it may affect decisions you make and even the decisions you make regardless of the accounting of that. We want to make sure that you're aware of those changes as they come down. The biggest one that's going to affect you all doesn't actually come into play until 2021, and that's the way that leases are accounted for. The GASB is changing how the leases are accounted to kind of mirror what's being changed on the kind of the FASB side, the for-profit side. And they're doing away with the capital versus operating lease concept, and they're really going to focus on bringing on the liabilities to your books for any obligation the town has to make future payments, whether it be for a police car or for something even smaller, or maybe if you just have a rental facility where you're renting the space on a four-year commitment. So, that's something we'll work with management on. Again, it's 2021, your fiscal year before that's applicable, but it is something we're going to encourage everyone to kind of jump in on, because they've got to reevaluate all the leases that may be in place throughout the town and not just the ones they previously accounted for. With that, that's all I have for the presentation. If you all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of them.
Thank you, sir. And I can't thank you for not reading the entire report. Councilmembers, I'll start to my right with Mr. Dellinger, if you have any questions or comments.
His mention about the cybersecurity situation as that accounts for the previous year, I've had some conversations with IT, and they're doing some mitigation for cybersecurity. Did that come up in your conversations with staff on forward-looking from last year into this year?
It is. And the comment in there is more of a best practice recommendation and not necessarily an inherent concern, we noted. Obviously, you all have seen news stories. There's been a lot of cybersecurity attacks on local governments. They're somewhat of an easy target. And so, what we're trying to make sure our clients think about is, they may have systems in place and a network set up, but are we actively monitoring how effective that is? And so, while it's not anything that's required at this point, what the, and I'm speaking a little bit out of my comfort zone, because I'm not the IT guy, but what our IT folks say is, what looks to be coming down the pipeline is, if you think about it in the financial world, right now, your finances, you do all the accounting throughout the year, and you have an audit at the end of the year to see how that effectiveness worked. And while there's currently no audit of your IT network, proactively, you know, with all that's going on, we want to recommend to our clients that they consider having penetration testing done or contracting with some outside firm to determine if someone gets into your network, how bad could they, you know, how bad of a situation could they create? How far could they go? What could they access? What are you doing to make sure that what you think is good is actually effectively good? And so, we've kind of talked about that. I mean, that's something I think you should consider. It's not, again, it's not something we actively did and noted a problem with.
Anything else for you, Mr.?
Not right now.
Okay, thank you.
No questions.
No questions.
No questions. Just going through. Is there one question I can ask the manager or Mr. Buck? One. This is the second year they've all done this. Are we on a two-year or three-year agreement with them, or are we doing it every year?
I think it's three-year, if I'm not mistaken. And I think, is there a renewable clause in there, you know?
Typically, it's a three-year agreement, but they're each individual one-year contracts. So, theoretically, you could make a change at any time. And then typically, it's, you know, if you want to continue on with that same firm, you can do so on a year-to-year basis going forward.
Okay. Anything else from council? Well, I'd like to thank you again, you and your firm, for the fine job you've done and for the very thorough information that we have before us. And I know finance has won many awards, as we alluded to earlier, and we expect a popular annual financial report, hopefully to keep that strain going this year. So, again, thank you very much for your work, and we may see you again next year, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. I'm sure councilmembers have had a chance to take a look at those items. Unless anybody wants to pull one of those items for a further discussion or questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
May I move that we approve the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Vance. Any further discussion, question? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it is so ordered. We have one public hearing this evening, I believe. Stacy Harper, Principal Planner, will be the presenter there. Ms. Harper, before I officially open the session, I'd like to remind council by reading some of the rules governing these hearings. This is a CUP, SP 1923. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, which means it is more formal than other public hearings. It is a fact-finding hearing, and appropriate sworn evidence must be presented as a basis for whatever decision the town council makes. Opinion testimony is not appropriate and factual evidence unless the witness is a recognized expert on the subject. Therefore, opinion testimony concerning such things as impacts on land values, traffic safety, or noise levels should be avoided unless the witness is a recognized expert based on training and experience. Also, hearsay evidence, which is relating what some other person said or wrote, and petitions of support or opposition cannot be considered. You're permitted to ask questions of other speakers concerning their factual testimony, and councilmembers are only allowed to receive factual information about the cases in this hearing and are not allowed to discuss the cases outside of this hearing. We would ask all speakers to please respect time limits and others to minimize repetitive We would ask all speakers to please respect time limits and others to minimize repetitive testimony. And I'll begin by asking council, if anyone here has had what is referred to as ex parte communication in regards to this hearing with the applicant? If so, now would be the proper time to indicate such. Hearing none. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'll recognize Ms. Harper. Please come forward.
Need to swear her, Mayor.
I guess we do, as a matter of fact, and her and what, any other persons? Do we usually do that at the same time?
Yes.
Okay. Any other person who wishes to speak, please come forward and be sworn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This thing is always a little too tall for me. So before you deny it, you do have KS Bank. This is a conditional use permit, CUP SP 1923. The owner and applicant in this case is K&amp;J Garner LLC. The site that we're talking about is at 409 US Highway 70 East. Excuse me, the tract size is 1.287 acres. This did go to Planning Commission in December, December 16th of 2019. The predominant uses in this area are commercial, industrial, and office, and the Garner Forward Plan does designate this area as corridor, commercial, and light industrial center. A neighborhood meeting was held on October 24th. Two gentlemen who were biking in the area stopped in to look at the tractors where they were holding the meeting, but they were not interested in the proposed development. They wanted to stop in and see the tractors because they saw the lights on. So, but that was the only attendance at the neighborhood meeting. With the site plan, again, it's 1.287 acres, one lot we're talking about, for a financial institution or bank. There's no minimum lot size currently for this mixed-use development type. The setbacks, 50 feet in the front and zero or 25 in the rear and side, that is zero feet when it's commercial against commercial, or 25 feet when it's against residential, which this case it is not. Corner side setback is 35 feet. That is the site plan before you. I've highlighted the proposed building in blue there and pointed out the drive-through lanes and the location of the bank in relation to US 70 East there. As you might realize, this is in front of Agro Supply. It's the area where the tractor, the trailers are currently. So as we go through this, you'll see that they are reinstalling some, some lawn there. So there's a decrease in impervious in this case. That's the building elevations. The building will be constructed of both dark and light gray brick veneer with a standing seam metal roof. No open space was required with this because it is a non-residential site. The tree coverage requirement of 12% is being met with 2% existing trees and 10% replacement trees. Again, this currently obviously doesn't have very many trees on it. There are some on the border with the adjacent property. There is a 15-foot perimeter buffer that's being provided on three sides of the property and a seven-and-a-half-foot street buffer against US 70 per the requirements of the US 70 401 overlay. The proposed lighting meets the requirements of the lighting ordinance as well as staff recommendations for LED fixtures. All fixtures have zero uplight, low glare, and a warm white light exhibiting a color temperature of no more than 4,000 Kelvin. The inspections department, together with the fire department, has reviewed and preliminarily approved this plan. The parking is based on the square footage, which is 2,196, of retail sales and service, which is the closest category that we have in our parking table, which is one space for every 200 square feet. So there would end up being 11 spaces required, and they're proposing 16 spaces. There's no FEMA floodplain on the site, and the site is not located within the watershed protection area. You see that on the aerial photograph there in relation to surrounding properties. KS Bank is a commercial site that is not located within the watershed protection area. Since this is a redeveloped site with a decrease in impervious surface, no stormwater management devices or payments are required for this redevelopment. The site will be served by City of Raleigh Water and Sewer Infrastructure. For roads and sidewalks, the KS Bank site does contain approximately 240 linear feet of frontage on US 70. Within the existing 200 feet of right-of-way, the development will add an additional lane of pavement to conform to the future US 70 section, along with curb, gutter, and sidewalk. The sidewalk will be located just inside the right-of-way to allow ample separation between pedestrian and vehicular traffic, and traffic entering the site will do so by an existing driveway on the east edge of the development. The 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan calls for US 70 to be a six-lane divided section in this area. Therefore, with the addition of a lane of pavement, along with the curb, gutter, and sidewalk, these plans may be considered consistent with the recommendations of the 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan. A review of the Parks and Recreation Open Space and Greenways Master Plan revealed no plan recommendations in the project area. Therefore, this project as proposed may be considered inconsistent with the Parks and Recreation Open Space and Greenways Master Plan. And after sufficient review and plan revision, staff finds that this project, as now proposed, conforms to the regulations of the Unified Development Ordinance, so long as three standard conditions and one site-specific condition are met. That would be prior to obtaining a building permit, the lot must be a lot of record. Prior to receipt of approved plans, the engineering department inspection fees must be paid to the Town of Garner. And prior to issuance of the first building permit, all applicable water and sewer fees must be paid to the City of Raleigh Public Utilities Department. And then for the site-specific condition, prior to issuance of the first building permit and approved NC DOT encroachment agreement for widening of US 70 must be received by the engineering department. The Planning Commission reviewed this request again at their December 16th, 2019 meeting. By unanimous vote, they did confirm staff findings that CUP SP 1923 KS Bank is in conformity with adopted town plans and policies. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. The applicant is here as well.
Ms. Harper, questions by any council members?
I talked to Mr. Trezenberg this afternoon. Part of the site plan here is that requirement they put into sidewalk, which I think is bizarre. I would take a fee in lieu of, because there's no, I mean, we're not going to build sidewalks on Highway 70 times a year. I see no need to have a sidewalk that starts nowhere and ends nowhere, and we have plenty of those around town as it, as it is. This is not a section that's, you know, being the leading sidewalk advocate on this council for over 20 years and jumping up and down and getting sidewalks. This might sound strange, but this is not a place to put a sidewalk. We need to focus on the sidewalks we have in our bond approval and then in other sidewalks too, that are on part of our plan, and also to connect existing neighborhoods that don't have access to our sidewalk plan, like the folks in Greenbrier. Get a stub out to them of timber and then put some old sidewalks on Timber Drive to get them to the sidewalk network. That's just one of the many neighborhood sites. I would suggest that we take the sidewalk out because, I mean, if you look, I thank Mr. Johnson for giving us our quarterly update on the capital projects. You know, the bridge at 50, the widen, the Highway 50 Bridge on 70 has been kicked back to next, next January of 2021. And the Vandor Spring Bridge, according to this, construction may start in 2028. So therefore, any plans to widen Highway 70 gets us into another decade if we're lucky. So I just don't see it as a push to put sidewalk on 70. I mean, years ago, we had this discussion with another council, different staff members, and we said take sidewalks off 70 because it's just not a focus. And when we had the discussion with DOT about the improvements at Timber and 70, and we asked about sidewalks, and they said we don't want to put sidewalks there, nor do we want to put crosswalks there because we do not want to encourage people to cross Highway 70. Exactly what they told us. Because we asked them if they could move the sidewalks up, move it somewhere else, but they told us they did not want people crossing Highway 70 and when it's three lanes, et cetera. So they said they didn't do that, but you can go a mile up the road to South Sonora Street, and there's four crosswalks there. I think the City of Raleigh did those, but anyway. But I just, I'd rather take a fee in lieu of, I just hate to have a sidewalk that sits there that does nothing. We've had one in front of the Presbyterian Church since the 80s. We've had one in front of Longdale, a living facility since the 80s, the sidewalk starts and goes. One of Longdale, at least we connected on Longdale Street, but on Lakeside Drive, the sidewalk dead ends. A sidewalk in front of the Presbyterian Church dead ends. We need to connect these links. I don't like dead-end sidewalks, except we have no plans to do anything anytime in the near future. I don't think any of us are planning to put sidewalks up on Highway 70. We need to put them in our neighborhoods. So I would just suggest that we take fee in lieu of on the sidewalk, because this, I mean, widen Highway 70, we need to work on getting the streetlights on Highway 70, make Highway 70 safer to drive on at night, not worry about the sidewalks. All right, I've been on my soapbox, I'll be quiet.
Okay, and that can be handled if there's agreement in a motion, I suppose. But before we get to that, be happy to hear from other council members who may have a question with this person, then we'll go to the applicant.
Yeah, I have some questions on the tree coverage and minimum requirements for this site, how they were initially determined. I know I drove by there earlier today, and so there are only a few on the backside, and there's some streetscaped ones in the front. I don't know if the ones in the front would be impacted, but it says here 2% current and 12% is what it would have to come up to. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is it also correct that the site plan should indicate where the preservation and replacement areas should be?
On the landscaping plan, it would be, yes.
That's not this plan?
That's not that, correct.
Okay.
There's, just to elaborate a little bit, so our base tree coverage area for commercial developments is 10%, and there's kind of a sliding scale, per se, if you're saving more, then you don't have to plant as much. So the top end of that is the 12%. So they are having to do the 12% total. But they have on, which would be, I guess, the left side of your screen, on that property line with, not with the Agro Supply, but with the, the offices on the other side, there are a few large trees there. There's three that I can think of specifically that I can remember seeing on the plan that are counting for their square footages that allow for that two, up to that 2%. And then the 10% replacement is in their buffers.
But they don't have to indicate where they'll be at this point?
On the landscaping plan, that is.
Okay.
Not on this site plan. This, if we had everything on this one plan, it would be just too much to look at on the screen, but it's part, for, part of the full site plan package, you'll see that there's a landscaping sheet. I think you probably saw that electronically, but that is outlined on the landscaping plan.
But we don't have that yet?
We do have that as part of the plan set that's approved.
But we don't have it here in our packet?
No, I think you got that electronically, the plans.
Did I even get a site? Anybody? I don't know if I got that. Was it in the, was it in the agenda? It was separate from the agenda?
If he's referring to the landscape plan, I'm not sure that.
I don't think I saw a landscape plan.
That, that's something I'm sure we could get a copy to Mr. Dellinger.
And it meet, with that, that plan, it meets the 12%?
It does.
The way they have it?
Yes.
Okay, that's what.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, my colleague, Mr. Singleton, I agree with him on the sidewalk issue. You know, I understand why it was originally done that way, but was we right around so much that, I recently had some folks I'm familiar with out on 42 Highway, and they, the town of Fuquay wanted a sidewalk out in the middle of nowhere in front of a building that nobody's ever going to use. And it's, it's costly putting in sidewalks. I think the fee in lieu of is just fine. There's common sense, and then there's just eye wash, as I like to call it. And I think a fee in lieu of would be fine here. I would agree with my colleagues on that, and that's something we should take in consideration. Let's be user-friendly to our development and no need to add additional cost in there when we don't have to for something that's never going to be used. And that's my two cents worth.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, other questions for, yeah?
There's a question related to sidewalks that I guess John may be able to give me insight on the bus rapid transit. Was that going down the 70 corridor at some point, potentially, or not?
Long-range possibility, but nothing that would be in our current planning horizon.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from Ms. Harper?
I would just like to say that I'm in line, I agree with what Gray and Councilman Gray and Councilman friend out here said in reference to the sidewalks in nowhere with no future plans of putting on any, any sidewalks to guide it anyplace. I think it's, it's, it'd be better used someplace else than on this particular plan. So I'm in line with what has been said in reference to the sidewalk removal and placement fee in lieu.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance. Anybody else, questions for Ms. Harper?
Mr. Mayor, you mind if I ask a question of staff?
Go right ahead, yeah.
With the fee in lieu of, is there any restrictions on where it can be used? What is our ordinance? All right, so we would, the council would have some leeway on what area of the town or general area it would be used in? Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Harper. And let's see, who else are we hearing from? Anybody else from town staff? Okay, the applicant is here. Anybody have questions for the applicant? Call him up if you do. Okay, I don't believe we have any questions unless you just want to make a comment. Okay, you're okay?
I have one, I'd have one question about the future use of the rest of the parcel.
Okay, let's bring him up and let him introduce himself for the record and give us his name and address.
Sure, my name's Eric Keener. Most relevant address is 100 Hartlow Street here in Garner. Happy to take any questions.
Just, is the rezoning of this, or is it a precursor to more development of that property in the future?
I don't expect so. This was the only parcel that we really have available potentially on the property. Part of the negotiations with the prospective tenant is that we are giving up what we treat now as some outdoor selling space. I think Ms. Harper mentioned that currently we've got trailers and then also some large agricultural tanks on that site. So we'll be moving those to a different portion of the site. But then really, all of our frontage along Highway 70 is spoken for. There is no other available real estate on the site at all to speak of.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I might just say parenthetically, I don't expect Mr. Hartlow to give up his tractor museum out there for any other development of any kind.
No, but we do have good things going on in the old store as well. We do have another tenant moving in there. So we do get quite a bit of utility out of that building as well. We're frequently contacted about it for redevelopment purposes, but what we always tell those folks is that no, that is an actively used building, and we look forward to, you know, having a new tenant to bring more business to the Town of Garner in there.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say that the Councilman Matthews apologized, but your, but your name slipped me when I was trying to remember yours in Singleton, so.
That's how it is when you get to be 39, I understand. It's probably kind of a lot worse than that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Keener. I think I remembered your name correctly.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that, okay? All right, are there any other persons who wish to testify in this hearing? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and call for a motion. Have a motion form in front of you, and if Have a motion form in front of you, and if the desire of the council is to incorporate...
Mayor, I'll make a motion on CUP SP 19-23 KS Bank that we find consistent with the town plans and ordinances, and a move that the council accept the staff's statements regarding plan consistency in Section 5 of this report as our own, and find the application meets the 10 permit criteria, Section 3.14. D., and therefore approve CUP SP 19-23 KS Bank with the noted condition that they can take sidewalk and fee in lieu of inside the construction of the sidewalk.
Second motion. Okay, motion's been properly made and seconded. Any other questions or discussion by any council? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, no, and it is so ordered. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Harper, and your folks, for your presentation.
Mr. Mayor, let me ask a request of the Planning Department on if in the previous agenda, I saw a copy of the letter that had gone out, the neighborhood meeting. If you could include those in the list of addresses, I saw that again, I'd like to see those in the future agendas as well.
Okay, that seems reasonable. Hopefully, that won't generate an unnecessary amount of paperwork, but I don't know how many letters.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe we have nothing under the items of new or old business unless a council member wishes to mention anything. None there? Okay. Committee reports? Any reports from committees? If there are none, the mayor would like to recommend to this council that we create an ad hoc committee composed perhaps of the mayor and the mayor pro temp to work with town staff in deciding process for replacing our town attorney. That would be a committee that looks at our legal needs as it relates to a contract attorney or perhaps a staff attorney, and that committee would bring a recommendation back to the full council before we moved into the process of actually hiring a town attorney. I'd like to appoint that committee this evening so that process could get started very soon. Does anybody have any concern or opposition to that? Hearing none, then the ad hoc committee will be Ms. Behringer and the mayor, and we will get with the town manager and his staff and begin work on that right away, and expect to bring a recommendation back to the full council in a fairly short period of time, I believe. Okay. If there are no other committee reports, Mr. Manager, we'll hear from you at this time.
You have the Garner info in the back of your packet. You'll notice that there's an influx of junk vehicles that have been reported, so we'll be working those. It appears they were added at pretty much the same time, so we'll be looking at those. There's also a building and permit activity report that shows some of the permits and building that's been done over the last month or so. And I'm going to call up the engineer, Chris Johnson. He's going to go over the capital project status report. You have a loose copy. You have a miniature copy in your packet, but then there's a loose copy beside you. It's already been referred to by Councilmember Singleton, and he'll talk about some of the projects there and the status, and then he's also going to talk about the street resurfacing list and where that stands, and go from there.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I was just going to go from some notes here I took, kind of walk through just a couple highlights from this quarterly update, kind of running through the same scenario or the same sequence as what you see in the backup. New Rand Road widening and Old Garner Road, or Garner Road sidewalks project. Duke Energy is currently working on relocation of poles along Garner Road. They're supposed to wrap that work up this week and then start to move their forces over towards New Rand Road to head south towards 70, and so we are awaiting them to get off the Garner Road corridor, and we're hoping that we can issue our notice to proceed to our roadway contractor as early as next week, but we'll be meeting with them later this week to finalize the notice to proceed date. White Oak Roundabout is making good progress. We're around 65% complete. We just received our first formalized review comments from NC DOT late last week, so we are looking through those comments and going to be meeting with our consultant to figure out next steps, but once those comments are addressed, we'll be moving towards probably the final design and right-of-way acquisition phase of that project. Lake Drive, which is the project that was added by council in conjunction with the 50 Bridge Project, those plans are now in hand, about 65% complete plans as well, so we're going to schedule a public meeting on that one since we have not met with the community yet, but once we've had that meeting, then we'll be moving into the, again, to the final design and right-of-way acquisition portion of that project.
Mr. Johnson, I have a question in reference to that project.
Sure.
Since the bridge project has been delayed, is this project, the Lake Drive project, contingent upon that project?
No, it's been basically, they've been kind of separate. Either one could come before the other. We're coordinating directly with DOT, and we just figured whoever got there first would build the portion that ties out to 50, so if we get there first, we'll build and the turnouts that they match to the DOT's 50 widening project.
Deal.
Good deal.
The Jones Sausage Road realignment study, although that's not...that's...planning's taken the lead department on that project, but that study's around 90% complete, and once that study's done, it'll be moving towards, I guess, that first phase of design for the section from Amazon down to the Garner Road intersection. Spring Drive Sidewalk Project is about 25% complete. If you've driven through there, it's looking really good thus far. Curb down near the high school end of the project, supposed to be completed by the end of this week, and soon they'll be moving towards getting forces out on Vandoor Springs Road along that side of the project. The other Vandoor Springs Project, we are currently awaiting Raleigh's approval on the design supplemental. We talked earlier about the waterline relocation that they requested due to it being an AC waterline, so we've got a supplemental in hand that we're just running through their review before we bring it to council for authorization. The Timber Drive Connectors Sidewalk Project, that bid award will be coming to council very soon. Right now, we're waiting on DOT's concurrence of our deferred reimbursement. I think we talked about how the LAP projects were impacted by the DOT's funding, and so they're requesting that they require the chief's office to sign off on any deferred reimbursement. So, we submitted that request in back just before Christmas, and so we're waiting. As soon as we hear back on that, then we'll be bringing the final bid award to you.
That project is designed and ready to go out?
Yes. It's already been bid, so we're just waiting final concurrence from DOT that we can award.
And that construction starts sometime in the spring, correct?
Yes.
Hopefully, okay.
And then, one project that we added is the Aversboro Crosswalk. This was a project near the YMCA on Aversboro Road to connect Old Scarborough at that intersection. So, we're looking at doing a pavement marking project that will put in a high-visibility crosswalk with some signage, with some flashing cautionary signage for that crossing. We've submitted that to DOT for encroachment review, so we're just awaiting their comments. That's a project that could be probably combined, maybe with either our resurfacing contract later this year or one of our other projects, because it's pretty minor as far as scope.
Mr. Johnson, if I could ask a question?
Yes.
If we could go back, excuse me, to the Jones Sausage Road widening, when do we anticipate that being completed? I'm sorry, Amazon's part.
Amazon's part, okay.
Oh, you're talking about the construction work on Amazon?
No, the road work from 40 to the end of the Amazon property.
And Amazon's portion of it.
Yeah, Amazon's portion of it. They have started construction.
They have?
Supposedly. I've not been out there, but they had the pre-con about three weeks ago.
Okay.
So, yes, they are...they've got a contract in hand, and they are moving...if you haven't seen anybody yet, you probably will any day.
There are a lot of flags on the side of the road, I think because utilities are going to have to be moved.
Right, yeah, they've got a lot of utility work going on. Surveyor's been out there, so it's forthcoming. I don't...we don't have a definitive completion date yet, but that is something that is being discussed, and I'm sure we'll be bringing that to you in our next update. The White Oak Sewer Project is substantially complete. Right now, we're just awaiting final as-built survey, punch list item closeout, but that line is completed. All manholes in line is in. The Stormwater Projects are about 70% complete. We've got two...we brought this to the Public Works Committee a month or so back, but we've got two of the four projects that are there in final design that are going to turn out to be fairly maintenance repairs for the most part, and then we've got two that are larger-scale items that we're going to have to put into the CIP. But they're working on analyzing Buck Branch, because there are three culverts along that stream, and we were originally just looking at the one, I believe, at Forest Ridge, but there's two others. So, we're going to look at Woodland and Spring, and we'll figure out how best to proceed, because those two are DOT crossings. Wasn't going to go through all the DOT projects, but wanted to highlight, I did touch base and got confirmation regarding the New Bethel Bridge, which has been something that's been talked about quite a bit. I have been told that they are planning to issue the notice to proceed in March, so they are ready to go. It's been awarded, but they decided to wait until the weather clears in the spring before starting work, and they've got a one-year contract time on that project, so you should be able to see that starting this spring. The Rayner Road Bridge Project...
I have a question about the...is that bridge going to be widened to accommodate how wide? Two, like a two lanes and a center lane, or four lanes, or what are they planning to do?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Two lanes.
Two lanes.
Two lanes.
Only two lanes on the Bethel Church Road?
And as my understanding, this is going to be done with a temporary detour bridge so that there will not be a stop in traffic. There'll be a temporary bridge put into place during construction.
The ultimate cross-section for that road is two lanes with a turn lane, and you wouldn't need the turn lane on the bridge, so that's accommodating the full future cross-section for the road.
For the three, okay.
Sidewalks on both sides. We asked the utilities if we could put sidewalks on both sides, correct?
Yes, sir. So, it would be a wider two lanes, but only two travel lanes.
Thank you.
The other two items I wanted to know, one was the Rayner Bridge Road, Rayner Road Bridge Project. Got confirmation the design and right-of-way acquisition on that project is complete, but the letting was postponed until January of next year due to the funding issues. And then, the NC 50 Bridge Project also, design and right-of-way are complete, and that one has been postponed to February of next year due to funding. So, those could change at some point, but that's the schedule we have in hand right now from DOT. Or is the resurfacing projects...first off, there's two projects of DOTs that are currently still outstanding. They recently awarded two projects to Fred Smith Company, Woodland Road Project, and then Mechanical Boulevard at Old Mechanical Court. So, those are the two projects we're expecting to see done later this year. Most of the other resurfacing projects that we had on our schedule from DOT, they have not finalized those or pushed them back to 2021 because of funding, so we're awaiting further guidance from them on the rest of the projects. For the town's annual resurfacing contract, we didn't have the final list of streets at the time I put together the project report that you have, but we're looking at a total of 13 streets for approximately 2.3 miles. Have a map I was going to pull up just to also remind...got a phone call today regarding one of our streets that we added on the 2019 contract. As you remember, we added Trade Street, which was a joint cost-share project with JV Auto Upholstery. JV Autos, of course, their family's been very gracious for that project, but we also got a call today from the business owner of Promo that is on the corner of 401, and they wanted to reach out and thank the town for adding that project and getting Trade Street paid. They said that that's been very beneficial for their business as well, so just wanted to pass that along to council. So, for the 2020 contract, like I said, we've got 13 streets, kind of divided this up into four blowups so that you can see them, but the north side of town, we've got McCormick Street and Loop Road, which are both collector, major collectors off of the US 70 corridor. We've got Foxwood Drive in Woodridge, which will be about a third of a mile. Glen Bryant, which is in Carmel Crossing, it's a smaller cul-de-sac project.
On the Foxwood part, Chris, I know that on the back, the section where it stops, the straight section that goes down to where it says Glen Brown, that's where Raleigh did substantial utility replacement, and I think they resurfaced that whole section, if I'm not mistaken. After, I mean, they've had substantial utility work over...it was closed like a year.
On Foxwood?
On, yes, on that other section of Foxwood, yes, where it's...
We'll take a look at that.
It might be called Foxwood. Foxwood Dead Ends, or it's that street that it ties into, but anyway, this...
I believe this section of Foxwood is in pretty terrible shape right now.
Yes, bad shape.
It's alligator cracked throughout. It's one of our most needed...
The other section is not called Foxwood, it's called something else. Forest Ridge is where we got the sidewalk. Forest Ridge is where you're coming down, where we got an issue with a covert over...look at where a sidewalk is, but anyway, thanks.
Sure.
Yes, that part of Foxwood is in poor shape.
Over on the east side of town, we've got in downtown district, we've got One Street, Emory Street, which is a narrow section that's a connector between Main Street and the subdivision. Then, we've got in Foley Station, Foley Street, and Steelwood, which is combined about a third of a mile of resurfacing. In Heather Hills, we've got Brucemont, which is also about a third of a mile long. Then, in Kimber Woods, we've got Kimberwood and Stockit, which are two smaller cul-de-sacs. And then, in the southeastern part of the town, we've got Falkirk Place in the Dunhaven subdivision. And then, the last is in the Eagle Ridge, which is one of the larger sections. We've got about over a half a mile of resurfacing on partial blocks of seastone and competition.
Chris, at this point, we don't...or maybe it's on a priority list here, we don't have any street repayment over in Cloverdale, is that right?
Not in this season. Not...it's not...based on the models that we've got and the pavement condition ratings, we've not put them in this year's. I'm sure that they'll probably be in there soon.
Okay.
But this is just the...a lot of these roads are all very, very low on the pavement condition rating.
Couple of people in that area feel as though they're neglected in that part of town.
But I know Cloverdale in general is going to be high on the list, so it may make it in there next year.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, I have a question. If we could go back to the DOT projects that were pushed off because of lack of funding, at one point, I believe they said they thought they would be able to add 400 of the projects back. Do we...has that been done, and do we know where they are?
I cannot answer that question. I don't know the answer to that.
We haven't gotten any information about anything in Garner.
I have not heard anything to date. Unless y'all had any other questions on the resurfacing, I was going to go ahead and give you also a brief update on the Garner Recesite, since that's usually a hot topic, and we've got a lot of progress out there. So, starting with the building work over the last couple of weeks, all major work associated with the building itself is complete. So, for the building, we're down to mostly just punch list items and finalizing all the inspections, most of which, a lot of which have been taking place this week and last week. Cleaning crews came in all last week, spent the entire week working out there, so most of all the windows and floors and walls have been cleaned down really well, bathrooms. So, they might have a few floors that need to be redone just from some of the work that's ongoing, but coming together very well. The roofer finished all the soffit installation around the exterior that looks very good, and they're currently working on all the roof spot checks and some of the leaks that we found. leaks that we found at doing roof repairs. So they've been working on that for the last week. And we've got our architect scheduled to arrive tomorrow to do a final walkthrough. For the GPAC, they've finished all the sidewalk. They had once, one or two small areas of sidewalk repairs, and they removed the debris pile last week that was over by the, the little pond. So right now, we're down to just some minor backfill in a few of those areas, and then ready for them to start working on repairing of the filter media. So that's the, the next major scope over at GPAC. And then on the rest of the site work, Montague Street, they're working on utility adjustments. They've got a lot of manholes and water valves to raise up to the final elevation before they can bring in the final layer of pavement. So they're working on that this week. All the parking lot signage and markings are pretty much complete, other than just a couple, couple signs that they're waiting to come in. The sock drain pipe that was along the frontage of the building on Main Street, that's all finished. Sidewalk's been repaired, and so we're about ready to bring our landscaping contractor back in to replant the frontage. And then the set, the, the largest delays have been experienced along US-70. Contractor completed all the undercut along the turn lane, and they installed almost two feet of stone in a lot of those areas, but that turn lane kind of sits right in, in an existing swale sag that's been there forever. So with, some of the water has just been coming up through the stone. It's been very hard for them to even get ready for a proof roll. So what they've planned to do is, is later this week, come in, they're going to put in a cement treatment, which will solidify that ABC and get, get it ready and stable so that they can start their base course lift of paving. And so the hope is they'll have concrete curb being ready to be installed sometime next week. There's guardrail on the eastbound lanes of 70, off the 50 on-ramp. It's got to go in, but there is some utility, fiber, power, and gas line conflict. So they're coordinating with all three of those utility companies to see what they can do to make sure that we, we can put that guardrail in, because there's like four or five foot deep posts. We want to make sure we're careful through that area.
That guardrail section, where is that? That's off the exit ramp off 50, Chris?
It's the on-ramp from, from 50 down on to, eastbound on to 70.
Okay.
There's a, there's a guardrail along that area.
So this is, this is a new guardrail?
It's a new guardrail.
Okay, alright.
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you.
And then the, the Montague Pond is going to be converted as well. They're going to have to take down the black fencing temporarily that was put up previously in order to convert everything and not damage the fence. But that work is also supposed to start in the next week or so. And then, once the turn lane is done, then they'll be ready to do the final concrete islands and pavement markings. And then after that, the only thing that's really left for the roads is to clean up some of the shoulders, seed and mulch, any of the disturbed areas, and do final cleanup on Montague Pervis and 70. So right now, the, the current completion date is the first week of February for the road portion. As, as we talked about, the building is, is much further along. We're hoping to have, be ready for maybe stocking, furniture, and stuff like that here in a week or so.
Is the opening of the rec center contingent upon the completion of the road?
Yes.
But February also, possibly?
As far, as far as bringing personnel and operations, we're, we're holding, we're not, not doing that until the, the roads are complete.
And Mr. Vance, we would likely not be prepared with the work that has to be done after the contractor's finished, such as the furniture and site furnishings and things like that that the contractor's not responsible for. Once they give us, or once we agree for a stocking permit or a temporary certificate of occupancy, we've still got several weeks of work to do before we can prepare the facility for opening. So it, it may not be that far out of line of when the roadwork would get completed anyway.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on either the rec site or the other projects?
Thanks again for providing this. This is very handy.
Sure, sure.
I can read it on the computer, on our computer screen. I can read it, but this is a little...
Chris, would you remind everyone where that's always updated on our website as well, so if someone, if the council or someone is watching from home is interested in seeing the report?
Yes, I believe it's right under the, if you go to the departments to the engineering link, it's got a project status report link right there that you can go to at any time. We just, we put it up there quarterly, so I'm sure Rick will be putting this, this version up there very soon, if not already.
He's coming behind you, doing something.
Yeah, it also, I also try to put it under news on the homepage. It'll stay up there for a while, and then it lives permanently where, where Chris says. In addition, there'll be an electronic newsletter coming out this week. I'll make sure it's in that. And if folks at home are not signed up for our electronic newsletter yet, you should be. You can go to garnernc.gov and, and sign up for that e-notification as well as others. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris, for that report.
Right, just a reminder, if you plan to attend the Triangle Commercial Real Estate Conference on January 22nd, please let the clerk know as soon as possible, so we can get you signed up for that. The cutoff for registration is Thursday, so we need to know within the next couple of days if you plan to attend that. You have in front of you, the thick book that's in front of you is the Parkson Rec Plan. Please be prepared to discuss that at the next meeting, full council meeting. And we've had a couple of presentations on it. Some, some of the information may be familiar, but this is the complete document, and we'll have that for your consideration at the next meeting, or whatever you desire to proceed with that. Anything else, Matt? Say about that, okay. And then just, for just a matter of information, the police search for the police chief, working with HR right now on putting the criteria together for that. Also, we're going to be looking at doing some research on some of the search firms in the area, or maybe, may, may not be in the area, they'll be close by, that will assist with that process and the, the search and advertisement for that. It's going to be an open process. That'll be open to internal and external candidates, and we'll go from there. The process can take a while, and we'll just try to get it moving along as soon as possible. But when you do a full process, planning to do an assessment center that'll have various exercises and things like that beyond just a, a regular interview. So, you know, it could take a while to put that together, but we feel like that'll be the best process to get the best candidate. So that's the route planned to go.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, for that information, and pleased to hear the progress on several of these areas here. Mr. Baggett, anything you need to report on?
Mayor, I would just like to point out that your town attorney's abrupt resignation was a, a shock to all of us. And there were several pending legal matters that needed immediate attention. And with the leadership of the mayor and the council, and the managers, and his two assistants, I think we've got a handle on the things that were on the table, on the stove cooking, and we're in, in good shape to go forward. So I feel a lot more comfortable about the town's legal situation than I did a month ago.
And thank you, sir, for that report and for your able service as our interim, in the meantime. Thank you, sir. Okay, we will now go to council reports. I'll start to my left with Mr. Matthews. Do you have any items?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One, I think we had discussed, but since we're talking about that crosswalk of down at the Y, also down at, we discussed the last meeting, having something down there at White Deer Park, that crossing right, you know where I'm talking about, down there, crosses over from Lake Benson Park to there. I've seen some tough calls this week. It's just a, that's an accident waiting to happen. We're talking about putting something in the median there, because the traffic's not quite sure what to do, and some of the people are, and some traffic's a little faster than other. I'm afraid somebody's going to get nailed down there. So if we could make that a priority, if, if nothing, then something right in that middle of the road, like you see in a lot of the other towns, it would be perfect, just to let everybody know, you got to slow down here.
We'll have to submit that to DOT, and they will, they have to give us permission to put anything within the, the road, roadway as far as crossing. And sometimes it can take a little while for them to review it and get back with us, but we'll, we'll be working on that as soon as possible.
That would be good, because I don't think it's going to be that complicated, just having something down there. Far as reports on properties that's in bad shape to be turned in, somebody to look at, how do we need to go about doing that, turn that in a year, or is there a form I need to use on that?
You can just hand it to me at the end of the meeting if you want. We also have our Garner Info, that report that I went over earlier. You can log into Garner Info and input the, the situation and the address there, or...
I'll just get a form and, and turn it in.
Just turn it in. We can do it that way, too, and put it in that portal for you.
Okay, that's all I've got, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes, I, in the video we saw before that Mr. Mercer had worked on, it was, neat to see Mr. Johnson there. It's been a year, he passed ago, passed away a year ago today? So, January 6th. So I appreciate that. In that, in that video, that was, that was neat to see. I'd seen the video previously, so that was nice. You'd seen, you'd, I remember when he passed, you showed the, the whole prayer he made, a little bit longer presentation, but it was nice to have that included. So hardly believe it's been a year ago since he had passed away. I also want to mention Saturday, that, this past Saturday, Davie Street, they had a nice event. I know that the mayor was there earlier than I was, but basketball season was opening up, and they had a, something they hadn't done in the past, they call a jamboree. They had teams to come in. They played a quarter here and a quarter there against different teams. You could kick off the basketball season, get through age groups. And in the morning, they had the younger boys and girls, and the place was packed. Was it not, Mr. Mayor?
It was, it was neat.
It was packed. So it's, it's something that, that is kind of designed for the rec center, because you've got three gyms and you've got more space, but it was, it was packed. And also, at the rec center, you could have more than one game going on at once. But anyway, it was a nice event. I was there with the, the older, the senior boys, senior boys and girls group that was there, and I watched it. So I talked to Michelle there, saw Mercer, Mr. Mercer Williams also, and talked with them. So it was a nice event. A lot of folks there. But anyway, just want to mention that. That's all I have for now.
I might just mention, they even allowed me to do the ceremonial toss of the opening game, and I didn't have to toss it more than once. We didn't have to do a redo.
They said they didn't want you to toss it more than once, it was so bad.
That's right.
That's what he dribbled between his legs.
Before he did it, I saw that.
I heard the story, dribbling between his legs. I don't know if I want to see that or not.
At any rate, it was, it was a nice event. Okay.
Just a couple of things for the manager. When the announcement was made about the DOT projects that were postponed, and we, we sent a letter of dissent, did we ever get a response to that letter?
We did not get a response, and quite frankly, I don't think we expect a response since it affects the whole state. So I don't know if they're going to single Garner out for a response, but hopefully, maybe sometime after the budget gets passed, state budget, I mean, they'll look at and maybe consider adding some more projects back on to the...
I'm just curious, just to see if they had done anything. And Mr. Johnson, I mentioned to you about how dark it was at the entrance to Evolve, the apartment complex on 50. Do we know anymore?
Yes, ma'am. They, they actually have installed one, one light pole. They're, the parcel that was part of what was constructed, there's actually a couple sub-parcels that are outside that area. But the frontage that they actually have is only about 300 feet wide where the driveway ties out, and we require about one pole every 300 feet. So that pole that they have out there sort of takes cares of their obligations for the parcel that was constructed. Now, when the sub-parcels get developed on either side, then, then more lighting would be required.
Okay. Alright, thanks. That's all, sir.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, just one thing. Along, along Highway 50, there appears to be a dumping that's starting along Highway 50. Someone's dropping what looks like to be a broken furniture. I will provide the location to you, Mr. Town Manager, represent that location where the, where the dumping is starting, so... Within the town limits? Yes, it is. It is? It surely is. And that's all I have.
Mr. Dillinger?
I just want to make sure that for work session later this month, the two items I want us to start to look at are ETJ expansion, and just have staff present a couple of reasonable scenarios on, given our growth patterns, and also some timelines for that process, maybe looking back at the, the previous one we did as enlightening us on that process. The other is beginning a discussion around speed controls in neighborhoods for cut-throughs. I've been getting a lot of feedback from folks on cut-throughs, and it's not just that the fact that they're cut-throughs is the speed of them, and there are a lot of people very concerned. So I think if we can begin a discussion around how to assess which ones are the worst and most dangerous, and then potentially look in the future for budgeting for whatever might be appropriate for individual neighborhoods after we prioritize them, that'd be a good thing to start to look at. The other is, I haven't gotten back with you all around the minutes, and figuring out a proper way for us to either approve a recorded minutes, and then doing a supplemental summary or summation that is also, addresses accessibility issues. But I'll reach back out to you all for that. And I think I saw on the calendar, MLK Celebration is on the 19th.
Yes, at the GPAC.
At GPAC.
PM.
Thank you. Let's see. And the NC Railroad Letter, were we able to get that put together yet for NC Rail, the thank you letter?
We thank them as a part of a letter that we submitted to them with budget requests. So if there's, we did sort of a dual purpose letter.
Great, thank you. And then the other issue that is, probably need to get together at some point and decide how we're going to address the parade coming into the next year. I don't know how we want to form a committee, or if we want to have some type of discussion, but I think the sooner we address that issue, the better, because the planning for multiple parades occurs soon, so.
Let me just mention, I've certainly had some preliminary discussion with the town manager on that issue, and I also have an intent to speak to, to, to another mayor to get some perspective at least there. So you'll be hearing some more about that fairly soon, I would say.
And then, tonight at Wake County Commissioners, they presented information on the, I think they finished the assessments, and they were revealing some information on the increase in property. And I think one of the numbers that jumped out at me, I saw it on Twitter, was that housing under 250,000 rose 31% in value. And so that kind of disproportionately affects some of our residents, but...
That was countywide?
Yeah, that was a countywide number. The higher valued properties, of course, went up a little bit less, but I think that's going to have a more significant impact on Garner than some other towns. Just something to, for us to keep our eye on as those numbers come in. And that's all I have.
Okay. Well, let me get Ms. Beringer in.
I'm sorry, I didn't read my notes correctly. When do we expect the concrete, I guess it is concrete debris, to be removed from the railroad right of way, from when the depot was moved and the caboose?
I'll have to check with Public Works on that. I haven't been given a schedule. I don't know if Matt knows anything about that, but...
No, we have a, a meeting on Thursday to check on the status of things, so we'd be able to get a better answer then.
Not on the concrete removal, but also just going out and smoothing it up. I know it's wet, I understand that. I just want to tag on something Mr. Dillinger said about traffic calming. You know, we went through a program. We have a, have a program in place, but that program, how we do it, may be something we want to review, because I think the devices we were using, I think it's been talked about, those devices may not be available, or they're hard to get parts for, or something like that. I think Mr. Hodges has mentioned to us before, said we may want to look at other options of traffic calming, because I've gone through other towns. They, there's a lot of different, different options. You can go right into Raleigh and see several. So something to consider, yes.
Anything else, Ms. Singleton?
No, sir, I was just tagging on to that.
Thank you. And by the way, as relates to the ceremony at the, for the handoff of the Optimist Club, I believe we'll have a proclamation here, and somebody will present it. In front of council, or they requested that, so we'll do that then. The other item that I would mention, I think every council member here has received some information as relates to replacement of some of our police vehicles. Some various ideas and thoughts have been... Some various ideas and thoughts have been offered up. Be happy to hear from the town manager if he wants to provide any update or detail. That's a decision that needs to be made right away.
Yeah, staff was scheduled to purchase three Chargers for the police department, and what we found out is Dodge has kind of halted production of some of the police cars, and they canceled 4,000 orders. So the next available vehicle is the Durango. We have, you know, in the past, we have bought some Tahos, but they're being redesigned, so that's not available. And then, there's another vehicle that's not available right now, the Explorer. I think they're working on that design also. Ford is working on that design. So the next available model would be the Durango. They are obviously more expensive than the Chargers, so it's, it would cost additional $36,000 to order the three Durangos. And so, we had, you know, had asked council about your preference in ordering those and spending fund balance to, to keep that order. I would remind council that during the last budget deliberation, there was a request for seven vehicles, and council graciously approved three. And as part of our, you know, vehicle replacement plan, that has several criteria built into it, we would like to try to keep as close to, as close as we can to keeping these three vehicles on the list. With it being a shortage of the Chargers, and the Durango being the next available option, I'm pretty sure there's gonna be an onslaught of orders for the Durango, so we're kind of under a time crunch if we really want to try to get those. So that was the urgency, and being that there were no other funds appropriated for it, we wanted to see if council would approve use of fund balance.
Those Durangos, they're like four-wheel drive, more multipurpose than, than the Charger?
Well, they have a police package. I'm not sure if four-wheel drive is included, but it's, it's, I don't know if they use four-wheel drive on police cars for the pursuit aspect of it, but they're beefier than the regular Durango that a consumer could get, though. Suspension and transmission and all that, so.
Do we already have, use Durangos in the fleet?
I think we have one.
Yes, in the fleet, not for police fleet.
Yeah, but not for police, yeah.
We have not yet done that.
Would, would be, would be then looking at purchasing Durangos going forward, even into the next fiscal year?
No, I think we would evaluate, if the Chargers were to come back on the market, we would evaluate whatever is available at the time, whether it's Charger, Explorer, or any other vehicle that may come out. I think the dealers just finding it not lucrative to build police cars only, especially as they discontinue models such as the Taurus, that got discontinued as a consumer car, so it's not lucrative for them to build it just as a police car, and tool the factory and set it up just for police cars. So the options are getting more limited. And the Crown Vic, which was the, the old standby that would last for a while, you know, that, they ceased production. Chevy ceased production on that a while back. So we're kind of stuck with, you know, two or three models that we can get for police vehicles.
Strange to think with as many police vehicles as used in this country, that they wouldn't want to make them. I just find it amazing that they would drop cars and not make them. I don't understand that. That's bizarre, considering how many are purchased every year.
Yeah, well, they want to sell it as a consumer vehicle also, so if it's not, in that market, they don't.
I'll be happy to hear from other council members. I would just remind my fellow council members that, you know, the VERC process that was approved sometime back and put in place is designed to keep the town from, well, keep a, keep a good maintained fleet, particularly for the police department and/or to avoid circumstances where we're putting off and putting off, and then having to replace a number of vehicles all at the same time. There's a process there for replacement that keeps it on sort of a, a regular basis to avoid some extraordinary costs at one time. So having said that, I'll be happy to hear from any other council members regarding this issue.
That was the grand total of how much difference, again?
$36,000.
Of all three?
About $12,000 extra each.
Of each, okay.
From a sedan or to a SUV, yeah.
Mayor, I'll say we've got a whole lot of choice, since nothing else is being manufactured, and we do need to take care of our police department. I'm prepared to make a motion that we authorize the town manager to go ahead and get the three Durangos.
Just before a motion, anybody else want to weigh in? Of course, you can weigh in after the motion's made.
I have a question. What is the expectation as far as mileage goes on a car, police car, before it is retired?
It depends on the use of it, and how long it idles. Mileage is one of the factors, but I think most of our police cars are getting upwards 100-plus thousand miles, but they do stay idle pretty much on the whole time the police officer is on duty, because of all of the electronics. So, and it, it probably varies by model also. I know the Impalas, we were, they were only going anywhere from 60,000 to 80,000 miles before the transmissions went out, so that's why they stopped manufacturing the Impalas. They were not good for the police, not as a police vehicle.
Thank you.
You mentioned there was a request for seven last year, and three were budgeted for, does that mean going into the next year, we're gonna be behind?
Yes.
Technically, we will.
There'll, there'll be requests to try to make that up, you know, I don't know if we'll be able to, but, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll reevaluate what vehicles are needed, and it's possible they may not all come back, and, or they may, with the additional, but we have a, we have a work team that evaluates all of that in the criteria, and they'll rank them and rate them, and then we'll put in a request for the amount that are needed for that year. But, but police is interested in seeing those come back.
Well, Mr. Matthews, if you want to make a motion, I think that would be in order at this morning.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the town manager to procure the three Durangos at the adjusted price for immediate order.
And as part of that, obviously, the, the funding comes from the, borrowing from the fund balance.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Okay, motion has been properly made. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion presented by Councilmember Matthews, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. None, the motion carries. Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions when you, when you're finished.
Okay, yeah, th- those are the only things I had. You and I discussed, we, we have continuing concerns about parking in, in fire lanes, particularly over at Timber Crossing around the post office. I don't know if other council members received, I guess you also received the concern that was expressed. Obviously, if there's something tangible we can do to, to resolve that. I know it was particularly a challenge, particularly in Christmas holidays around the post office parking area there. So that is, that is an ongoing concern. To make that go away, that's probably impossible.
There's another post office over.
Our police department's gonna be looking up, ramping up some enforcement on that, and also our fire marshal, because those are the two divisions that are allowed to write tickets for the fire lane. So something we'll be looking at as we have staff available.
Thank you. That's all I, all I have. I'll go back to you, Mr. Mayor.
I just wanted to check in with council on the ETJ presentation, and just make sure our staff is gonna be available, not available, but we can put that together. I think that's probably some extensive mapping and that type of thing, and council, I don't know the exact protocol for adding stuff like that to the council meetings, but is that something we want to bring back, different?
Well, you know, I'm, I'm wondering if, could, could, could that be done in a fashion for Mr. Dillinger and/or if Mr. Matthews? He had an ETJ expansion approval recently, I, maybe I'm thinking of two or three.
About two and a half years ago, but.
Yeah.
But I, I think the purpose for Mr. Dillinger is to bring it back to the full council for discussion, and I, maybe, but I know John's got some information.
The planning director and I have been trying to get some schedules through the holidays to get together with Mr. Dillinger and talk about his question, and I think it's, it might be early at this point to, to actually schedule what meeting that comes back to, and if he would let us, we'd talk to him offline about some of the considerations that we need to take before we put it on a schedule.
Well, I think we need at least a little bit of preliminary discussion as, as a full council around some of the issues we face around growth, and at least beginning to look at timelines so that everyone's informed as to what that timeline looks like, even if we don't go in depth, but at least to know what it's gonna look like for us to undertake something like that.
Okay. If, if we could, we'll, we'll have, we'll meet with you and talk through some of those questions. And I think also, one other thing is we've got a, a very long agenda for the January work session, that we just need to figure out the prioritization of what.
And I, I really, I mean, I really would like to see this as part of that.
Okay.
I think one of the concerns also was with the Southern Loop coming through, just south of our ETJ. Obviously, there's gonna be a lot of construction, a lot of development, and we, and I think that's where Damian and I was concerned about further out than where we're at right now, that we need to go ahead and get an advanced start on this thing, be looking at this thing, because I can assure you, the other municipalities are looking at it on the other side of it. And so before that comes through, we really need to be very proactive on that ETJ, especially with that Southern Loop coming through. I think that was a big concern.
And our last ETJ expansion was made, it was done with the analysis of the 540 coming in, so we can, we can summarize that for you when we.
Yeah, let me, let me suggest that at least preliminarily, you and/or whoever else would care to, to get together with staff on that, and then we can certainly have a further discussion about bringing it back for the whole council at an opportune time. All right, anything else? If not, you have something to say?
I, I got contacted by a citizen about an item I need a little, nothing about as regard to, he was asking about electric car charging stations in Garner, where are they? Well, I had no idea, because I had no knowledge of it, because I don't use them, so I told him I would check into it, and I emailed staff. I Googled and started looking, and found out that there are quite a few of them around in Garner. There are a lot provided by some of the municipalities. Mr. Johnson responded, because he's worked with Raleigh, he knew where they had several, and they put in a few years ago, some of them. And most of our surrounding communities have them, Raleigh, Cary has been numerous parks, Raleigh has been numerous facilities. I don't say it's just parks, but facilities, Apex, Holly Springs, Morrisville. I went all the way down to East of the Beach, you'd be surprised, there's some places that had electric star charging stations, I was really surprised. So I asked staff just to kind of let me know, you know, we've, we've got a, you know, new town hall, we got a downtown that you're looking at attracting people to. I don't know how many people use electric car chargers, but there are electric cars out there, and people are gonna continue to buy them and continue to sell. And, and Rod raised a good point, he's, now you put them in, who pays for them, who pays for that? That's a good point. I said, if somebody will figure out how to make a dollar off this, somebody will figure out how to put them in, like at some gas station. Some businesses have them, some of the Targets have them, some Sheetz have them. I asked my daughter and son-in-law, they're in an apartment complex, there's three or four major apartment complexes at Six Forks and Atlantic, and they said there's some scattered around. So I asked my, I mentioned it to, I asked Mr. Treesenberg, maybe we should have, you know, required some of this in, in some of the multifamily. It's late now, because we've approved numerous ones. But anyway, staff is gonna look into it and give us some feedback, it's not something that, you know, tell them they gotta have it back by next week, but whenever they can get some information, where to put them, where to consider putting them, do you ask businesses about doing it? I don't know. So anyway, I just want to mention that to you, that, that was mentioned to me, and I had no knowledge, but you Google up, Google up electric car chargers in Wake County and see what pops up. They're all over the place.
You can take an exit.
There's a big hole in Garner, in southern, southeastern Wake County. But anyway, there, there, I was surprised down east at some of the locations that have them, and their town halls, so it's really, some of the small towns that have them. And you can get grants, Apex, if you Google, Apex's got a grant through Duke, through NC State, through the state electrical co-op, there's four or five different organizations where they'll give you grants to help with them, so. It's passing along.
You can take an exit off of I-40 down in Duplin County, and at a restaurant down there, right across from a hotel, they have.
At exit 363?
Excuse me?
360. I know which one you're talking about. I know, I know about my exits. 364, I'm sorry.
Yeah, maybe that one, yeah, I'm not sure.
That's one.
Okay.
The worse solving.
That's a, that's a, that's a coming thing, I think, sure enough. Okay, I'm at the item on the agenda that says adjournment, unless anybody else has an item of business before that, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
The mayor. I know, I guess I'm not properly allowed to speak to you, but I wanted.
Could you, could you, yeah, please, please come up here so we could, and most of us know you, but give us your name and address, Ms. Jenkins.
Elaine Jenkins, 4612 Winter Locken Road in Garner, well, technically Raleigh, but, you know, Greenbrier. Just on the speed bumps and the, trying to, you know, solve problems with speeding, we've dealt with it for the 33 years we've lived in Greenbrier. The town helped us by, we put in speed humps, oh, I don't know, 15 years ago. Technically, I'm sure they were put in, I guess, properly, but they don't work because cars can ride between them. And we were told when we asked if we could bring them closer together, that they said that the emergency vehicles said that they couldn't therefore go over them. But it's amazing how we're all able to go over them, but everybody rides right between them. So my recommendation would be to put another little hump in the middle and say, you know, I've never seen the emergency people speeding through there anyway, but they don't work because of the way they're positioned. You know, it's just, it's a joke, it's a joke. I go over, I'm out of principle, but I'm about the only person I see that goes over them, you know, properly.
And other towns, Ms. Jenkins, I go through them, they don't have, they were the only town I have that sees those. If you go to Raleigh, go to Glasscock Street, the fire department is right, Raleigh Boulevard up there, and they come down that, and Raleigh put in, they put in elevated sidewalks, now somebody put in speed bumps on that road. And I know the fire trucks drive up and down it, so it can be done.
And we are a terrible cut through, you know, from 401 and 70, of course, whatever's gonna happen after they change 401. But I think if we just took another little hump and put it in the middle, we'd solve all that, because we have terrible, I mean, we really, you're talking about scary, it's scary.
One of the issues, as I said, Mr. Rogers raised, is getting parts for those, that type of device now is, that type of device is not common or may not be manufactured anymore, and that's why I say it's not, maybe because people find it the same thing, you can drive right through it.
Mm-hmm. If you long drive, drive through it, it's just, it's a joke, it's a joke.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Okay. All right. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second. In favor?
Say aye.
Aye.
It's approved. Thank you very much. Thank you for those of you who came tonight.